Thank you. Nice job. All right. So with that, I'd like to call tonight's special planning board meeting to order. It's November 5th. It's been a long week as for most people, I'm sure. And let's see, just do a quick roll call. Vice Chair Matthew Lowery, you here?
Here, present.
Thank you. Bill Diamori, are you here? Thank you, present. Megan Menasali?
Present.
Present. And Joanne Schooler?
Here.
Nice to see you all. And I'm Bill Spalding. I'm our chair, Planning Board Chair. And I have to say, I'm really excited because this is the first time in maybe more than two years that we've had full five members of a board in one meeting. I'm really excited to hear that. So thank you all. So with that, I'm going to let's see. So I need to find out, running into some technical difficulties this evening, I do not have a host key. And I need to know who has the host privileges, like who is signed on? I do not see in the participants. Okay. Well, on our agenda this evening, we have two items would be Article One and Article Two, presented by the Friends of Lake Quantapowhat. To review those, I'm going to open up our public hearing. And I would like the Friends of Lake Quantapowhat to share their screen and present the PowerPoint.
Mr. Chair, I can claim host and then I can assign you to be the host if you'd like.
You can try to claim the host, but you need a code.
Oh, okay.
It's a six to 10 digit number that is usually sent. And through my emails and everything, I have about 14 of them from previous meetings, but not one for this meeting.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Bill Conley, 80th Realm Street, representing the Friends of Lake Quantapowhat tonight. I've got a message here that I'm disabled from screen sharing.
I am disabled from screen sharing as well.
Well.
I'm sorry. I apologize. It's not a good start. I know. Something I've been trying to reconcile since for the last 20 minutes.
When you were asking for a host key, I can host on Zoom. We have a license to. I don't know if that helps at all. Doesn't look to, doesn't look to be possible.
It does not, not for this meeting set up by the town, so.
This is police with Galvin. Do you think we contact Steve Mayo's office?
Well, I already did. And and I believe I have it. So.
Okay, good.
Yes.
I have, I know it's not my turn to talk, but what if you logged out and logged back in?
Nope, I have host now. I have control.
Okay.
I can mute you all. I could do a lot of other things. But what's important right now is I can give control to Mr. Conley to present. So now you should be able to share your screen.
Everybody see that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and the Planning Board for the extra effort and, and cost it took to, to have this hearing tonight. We, we appreciate it. In the interest of of conducting a quick meeting or a brief meeting, we will certainly move it, move it along and respecting everybody's, everybody's time tonight is one of our goals. And I just have to shift to the so a little background, just brief background, but FOL's actions and sponsoring zoning change articles was triggered by the proposed development plan on the lake shore. The plan was of unprecedented size by far in Wakefield and impacting important open space. And I could say a lot more about the lake environment, the lake area. But we'll move on. Since we proposed the changes, we have received overwhelming public input of concern and support for action. Petition signatures, an overwhelming number, requests for lawn signs, many, many conversations across town, neighbors across the street with folks out and about. We, from that, we have a belief that the articles submitted represent fair choices for the citizens. Article one prohibiting residential use, just briefly explained here. We have reconsidered that article. The reason we've reconsidered that article, and you've been informed of this, Mr. Spalding, I know, and also Town Council, Steve Mayo and Town Council have as well, I believe, is precisely because of the input we received from many, many citizens. It was a reaction to the proposed development. The note here says, we will be motioning Saturday to remove it from the discussion and vote at town meeting. We are focusing on Article Two because we think it's fair and reasonable. Article Two limits density, again, from much, much public input where we had conversations where we arrived at, at, at decisions or expectations that a balanced approach in that area is the best way to go. And we believe Article Two supports balance that allows residential, that limits density. And that's what we're addressing tonight, and we hope to address at town meeting. So a little repetitive, but it limits residential development density in the lakeside limited business district. We know what we're talking about, but it's explained here. North Ave from Karen Road, that's the neighborhood, along Quantapowhat Parkway to and through the American Mutual Converse Building and the rest of their property out almost to Lowell Street. The article that we will be hoping to discuss at town meeting still allows ZBA approval of residential use by special permit, whereas Article One wouldn't. So it puts the ZBA in control, and it mirrors what the controls that they do have. But we think it's important to get it to town meeting and to really get a sense of what the people of Wakefield are thinking about this. And they possibly, and we hope will vote for. It allows and in fact, encourages reasonable balance of residential and commercial development in the district, protecting the lake area. And it also protects, we believe, the tax base by encouraging that commercial mix along with limited residential. So asking the board tonight, we hope the actions by the property owners to free zoning in the district should have no bearing on tonight's deliberations. We hope that you see these articles as an appropriate regulation for the town of Wakefield in an area of inestimable importance to Wakefield. Looking back, this residential development plan was thrust upon us all, really, and it's void of any vision or plan for development in a very sensitive area that brought us a significant portion of the lake. If you look at what the town by their master plan and the town in their zoning and the town charter, they're really asking for development that ends up benefiting the town. And I can paraphrase a little bit of that as they summarize the goals. The goals they have is improving the town's character, quality life, and respecting open space. Now that is, you could interpret that as being planned development for this very, very important area. Again, this is part of the master plan and part of the, your charter as a planning board and the charter of the town and the charter of the zoning board of appeal. So we hope that resonates with everybody that this particular development that is possibly coming to town, development plan, is lacking context for the important area up there. It's one parcel, one development, and we think Wakefield needs to do better than that. They really need to think in terms of planning for that area. And we will fully admit that we do not have, we did not have time to plan for that. But we are suggesting that we, we do take time. We don't want development to go forward without making careful studies of the resources, possibilities and needs of the town, quite frankly. When you make your decision tonight, FOLQ hopes that you make a positive recommendation for our articles to be voted on at town meeting as a way to limit overly large development, significantly over large development, and achieve a desired goal of community value development for the town of Wakefield. We hope you vote, you vote both articles forward because administratively, we need to motion to remove, we're committed to removing Article One. We have arrived through conversations with the community, and we fully support Article Two, getting to town meeting and let the citizens of Wakefield have a vote on what we consider a very, very important article for the town. I think that's all I have. I'd be happy to take any questions on the slides and hopefully contribute to some of the discussion later on in the meeting. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And just to I can share. Can you see the zoning map?
I can stop share, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, if you can stop share.
Thank you.
I know there's a multiple share option. Let's see. You see the zoning map?
Yes.
Okay. So Wakefield zoning map, you can see the limited business is this lighter shade of pink. And that yellow is Lake Quantapowhat and 128th running here. Just to be clear, for those of you who are looking at this, North Ave, and here is the limited business area that we're discussing tonight. There's also some limited business area. Sorry for jumping, trying to scoot over to Salem Street. I believe that's on the other side. I'm going to move some of my Zoom controls so you can see. You can see up here in the top right corner. I think those are the, looking at the map, were the only two areas I could find that's limited business. You can see yours 95, 128. So this limited business area here. And along here. So those are the areas that we're talking about. I'm going to stop sharing. I do have a question to start off. Mr. Conley, you mentioned that you were receiving much public input. I'd like to hear how that was happening because usually when a zoning bylaw is presented, as we discussed in previous meetings, it comes to the planning board, comes onto our agenda. We spent some time looking at the words and then opened up a public hearing, set that. So it's really open up to everybody. There's ads in the newspaper, there's the agenda set. And it used to be in person. It was wonderful to fill the room up at Town Hall. But now that we have 85 people on this call, it's lovely to have that much participation. So I'd like to hear how the Friends of Lake Quantapowhat opened this up and got public input.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I can answer that in by saying that our petition drive, where we met a lot of people face to face, getting them to sign the petition safely, we had conversations relative to the possible plans for the lake and the area. And the support was overwhelming in, in favor of looking at taking some action that possibly would limit the potential size of the development. We also received much input from our emails that we sent out to members and supporters. We received comments on Facebook and Instagram. People stating their support for us and asking questions of us many, many times. So it wasn't always immediate support, but in conversations, it often became that people were supportive.
Okay.
Support of our, of our taking action to look at the development that was planned.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks for explaining. Thinking about our conversation or your, your point in our conversation with Town Council, Tom Mullen, where it was brought up like how this would work. So by removing one of the articles, and I just want this to be clear for everybody tonight. So there's no misunderstanding. Tonight, we will need to close this public hearing at the end. And then the Planning Board will discuss and figure out if we are recommending favorable action or not recommending favorable action. Either way, we're going to create a report. That report will be completed tonight, tomorrow morning, sent forwarded to Town Council and, well, Steve Mayo and Town Administration. So with that, both these articles cannot be changed in any wording tonight. I'm just repeating that from our last meeting. So everybody understands, we cannot change any of the way it's written. So that will be something that if something needs to change or be amended to Article Two, for example, which is town meeting Article 11, if you're keeping track on the warrant, that would need to be done on the floor with an amendment to the motion. Whether the Planning Board recommends favorable action or not, both of these articles will go to town meeting. And the advice we received from Town Council, from Mr. Mullen, was that if they, if you do not wish it to proceed, you need to make a motion for indefinite postponement at town meeting. And the moderator will take care, excuse me?
I acknowledging that.
Okay. But you were in this email chain, but I want to make sure everybody understands how this works. So if there are any questions about that, as we move forward into the public comments and open it up, we can, we can review it again. At this time, I'd like to ask any of the board members if they have any comments regarding the articles and Mr. Conley's presentation.
Yeah, I do, Bill. I'm basically echoed the same question you had is that Billy, you were saying there was, there was a group of people that came up with this article, and then they decided to pull it back with, with public comment. I'm, I'm curious exactly who these people are that, that inputted because I did not know that you were taking comment on this, or that this was, that you were soliciting comment for, frankly, for the article or to pull the article back. So I know there's been many mentions of the petition. Did, did the petition explicitly state that you were going for a zoning change? Because again, I have not seen a petition. I know it was sent to the town, I believe to, to, I guess, the clerk, but we have not got a copy of that. So if you could tell me what the petition said and, and who the group of people was that decided to, to make the article and then pull it back.
Uh, Mr. Lowery, I don't have a copy of the petition in front of me, but I can tell you that the petition spoke in general terms of concern and the possibilities of the development and concern of the development. And it asked for citizens to get involved. And they did. So at that time, we were not sure what our course of action would be relative to submitting articles to address zoning. So we were talking in general terms. They were talking in general terms. We got specific terms out of that conversation and decided to go forward with our articles. We received further input of learning. We're, you know, we're not really a overly political group, but we did learn and we realized that Article One probably would be an overstep and wasn't really favored by, I'd say, a majority. It was, there were some concerns about that as we took inputs from our website, as we took inputs from Instagram, as we took input, inputs from Facebook and from our, our members and our board. That's the reason why we are not focusing on Article One. We thought it was a fair choice originally for the district. We don't believe it is now. I hope I've answered your question.
Yeah, somewhat, because it has been implied in our, in our last meeting that there's overwhelming support for the art, for, for this zoning change because people signed a petition. So I just wanted to, you know, I'm just trying to get it clear that when people signed a petition, they did not know they were signing a petition for a zoning change. Correct? They were just signing a petition saying they do not like excesses, excessive development at the lake.
We would have mentioned to them that that was one of the possibilities we were considering, quite honestly. But I think the point we're trying to make in encouraging the board to act favorably on Article Two is that it should get to a, a public vote, a vote of the town, not necessarily what we are saying to planning tonight, but to get to the town, look at the balanced approach that that article represents, and then vote either for it or against it. And that's our, that's our goal. We can't state it any, any way differently. We fully admit that in a different scenario, we probably would have done the steps more according to what you're used to and you would have seen and consulted. We didn't feel we had enough time to do that, which we acknowledged in previous meetings with you. We appreciate the extra effort to get this hearing. It probably wasn't led up to exactly in, in the norm, but we, we think you heard in, in previous times that it's important, it was important to act on this and important to get it to town meeting.
And what I'd like to do while we are discussing, I did pull up the town warrant. I hope you all can see that clearly. And maybe that will help too, as we are discussing. So Article One is Article 10. Article Two is Article 11. Did I get all of that? Or does it clip to the other page? It does. That's unfortunate. I know. Okay. Well, let's, let's do this. Let's look at, because there's all these pages. So Article six, nine, 10. So, and Matt, if you have more questions, and Megan and Bill and Joanne, we'll, we'll get to them. I just want to make sure because just looking through my notes, we didn't actually get a chance to read through the articles. So Article 10, which is still going to town meeting. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Town of Wakefield, as follows, amend 190-23.b table one, table of use of regulations to prohibit residential uses in the limited business zoning district by changing the following usage from Y, that means yes, or SP, meaning special permit, to N, meaning no, not allowed. In said table, assisted living facility, garden apartment or detached, attached dwelling complex and mid-rise apartment, or to see what the town will do about it. So this one is being removed.
Correct.
And this is going to be interesting to see if I can get to it. But to see if the town, Article 11, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Town of Wakefield, as follows, amend 190-23.b table one, table of use regulations to prohibit certain residential uses in the limited business zoning district by changing the following use from special permit to not allowed. In said table, mid-rise apartment and further to add the following sentence to the end of paragraph two of subsection B of 190-32, multifamily dwellings, mixed-use development. So this is what would be added, notwithstanding any other provision in this chapter where housing, whether garden apartments, attached dwellings, or combinations of same are proposed within the limited business district, a maximum of 14 units per acre of lot area is allowed, or to see what the town will do about it. So I would like to leave that up there because I am hoping that our focus of tonight's questions back and forth with the board and with FOLQ, that we could definitely discuss how this is worded as well as any other concerns that the board has before we go to any other comments. Sorry, I didn't bring this up earlier. It was a little frazzled at the beginning. Matt, before you jump back in with questions, I do have a quick question about this. Why, how did 14 units per acre? And I was wondering if 14 units is actually defined? Like, what is one unit? Is it 800 square foot, square feet? Or is it 5,000 square feet? How is that defined?
Who are you addressing that to?
Well, I guess it would be you, Bill, where are the Friends of Lake Quantapowhat to see how this was written. I really want to understand before we start discussing, what is 14 units?
Uh, that language is from the current zoning, Mr. Chairman. If you look at the limited business district and defines that multiple residents is, can be allowed in the district by special permit, that is the, the metrics that is within special permit one, which is the limited amount of density allowed under special permit. One is 14 units per acre of lot area. I don't know anything more than special permit two allows, I believe, 30 something.
36 units per acre.
36 units. So.
Not more than 63 bedrooms. So just in the wording two, under density for A, it's 16 units per acre of lot with not more than 28 bedrooms per acre of lot area. So this would be, I just want to make sure it's clear to understand before, just thinking to how this would normally run with enough time, we would discuss what this is. We would figure out exactly the wording of 14 units. So it's not too ambiguous when it goes to the floor and these questions come up at town meeting and we really can't answer them. There's a chance that our board will be called up to explain this. And I want to make sure we understand it the same way the Friends of Lake Quantapowhat and the citizens petition, who petitioned for this. We want to represent it properly. We want to be able to understand, to recommend favorable action, exactly what this means. We want to represent it properly. We want to be able to understand, to recommend favorable action, exactly what this means. So with that, I think we should continue the discussion to Matt, Bill, Megan, or Joanne, if you have any questions or comments.
Yeah, I still do. So, Bill Connolly, seeing that Article One, you're now revising that, do you believe that this was a little bit too rushed without enough input? Before going forward with it, or do you think it was, it was vetted properly with, with all the people that are stakeholders on this?
I'd have to say, Mr. Lowery, that it was because we're now eliminating, eliminating or trying to from consideration that it was, we were informed as we were starting to discuss the situation, getting inputs. It was information received that, I guess we, we came to the conclusion that it was probably not in the best interest of the town as it was represented by the people who were informing us.
Again, this is based on, on, on whom? The, the friends of Lake Quanapowit or, or the public at large? I'm, I'm still trying to, you know, you're saying you're getting input from, from people. And then once this was, was proposed, you got additional input that it wasn't correct or wasn't, you know, maybe appropriate. So you pulled it back. There is a process where this is basically put out to everyone. And this is the process right here is a public meeting where these things are vetted. So I, I'm just, you know, I'm just thinking that this was rushed a little bit too much is what I'm getting at.
Well, I, I think I would agree. We had a compressed timeframe. But if we had more time and we had more input and we didn't offer this article, I'm not, I'm not sure. I, I'm not, I'm not sure why us noting, informing that we will not be arguing in this article tomorrow would make any difference. If we had, if we had more time and we had decided not to send this article forward, we would be talking about Article 11 where I think the discussion should be.
Yeah, I agree. I think we should focus on Article 11.
Is there, is there a concern that Article 10 would, man, this thing jumps, Article 10 could possibly at town meeting? And I'm not saying this would be done to trick the planning board or the town or anything. What if we do get to town meeting? And we do find out that Article 10 is moving forward, even if we do not recommend favorable action? And then it is voted on in the floor and there are enough people there to pass it.
Mr. Chairman, we would not do that. We would not be, we would be violating the, the trust of our, our board, our members and our supporters. We would be, we would be doing something that we feel from what we understand is not in the best interest of the town. So we will not, we will not be doing that. We will stand by our statement that we're going to motion to remove the article for consideration and not bring it to vote.
I did have to ask that question because it is a concern. Thank you.
All right. Then, you know, I have questions on, on, on the second article that I'm going to bring forward then too. So the, the 14 units per acre, would that be proportional? So if you have half an acre, would that be, would that proportion wise or how would that work?
I think, I'm not in a position to, to look at those type of details with that, Matt. It's the current zoning has this language in special permit one. So how effective it is when zoning issues special permit one and how it's determined and how, or how easily it's determined. I suspect it is easily determined. I can see where you're concerned. But I think some of this, in, if people are concerned about that at town meeting, then the question will be asked of Mr. Mullen and perhaps the zoning board to explain further, but I, I'm honestly, I'm not in a position to explain further tonight on that. It's as we read, we have an understanding that it limits significantly less than proposed development that would allow 485 units or more. This brings that number down, encourages the district to still be commercial with residential and a balance. And that's what the people want to vote on.
Well, so if this article comes, if this article comes before town meeting and there are questions on it, you're not prepared to answer those questions then? You're going to rely on someone else?
I would, I would respectfully ask Mr. Mullen to explain further, or if there are in attendance, any people in the zoning board of appeals, perhaps even the town moderator to, if it needs clarification, then they will have to seek clarification.
But, but this is your article you're presenting.
Yes, and we had no access to, we had no access to define these terms further than what are currently in the current zoning laws. We had no time, I should say, and regrettably, we didn't have enough time, but we also felt we needed to take some action.
All right. So would you, would you say that this, that these two articles are basically reactionary to one specific project and one specific parcel?
They are reactionary to that, but they are, as you can, can see, because we're talking about the district. They also represent a consideration that other projects, thinking in terms of one parcel and one development could happen in that district. And we're hoping that the district is zoned with this, with this article to continue the business environment there and to allow a combination of residential and business. We're hoping that plans can be developed in that area along those lines. First and foremost, we, we have heard from people that large residential is not what they want. And that is our main motivation on proposing this and arguing for this. So, so to answer your question, yes, reactionary, but we did have time to think it through. We thought it through where we believe in Article Two. And we think the citizens should look at it and vote on it tomorrow. Saturday.
But you're, you're changing the entire district. So not only do you affect this parcel, but other parcels up there and another parcel that's not even close to the lake.
Well, when you say effect, right now it's zoned for business. So anything happens there has to happen with permission. And the permission we feel strongly about grants them residential, but limited and would continue with the business environment. And hearing from taxpayers concerned about residential and business and swapping that out completely is not favorable for the town. We, we also, you know, have come to that conclusion also. Again, we think it's fair and reasonable for town consideration.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, do you have any comments?
All right. No, not at this time. I just want to think about it a little bit more.
Right. Megan?
I, I had a couple of questions. One of them was in regards to was with the request to reduce the number of dwellings, was the, was the town's plan in regards to affordable housing considered when drafting the zoning bylaw change?
The affordable housing conversation came up just briefly in talking with the prospect, the development prospects. It was not presented as affordable housing 40B. It was, it was mentioned that there would be a percentage of affordable units in the development. It's a small percentage. Pretty standard, I think, from what my research, it varies development, development, town requiring it. That was the only discussion. We, we didn't really think in terms of affordable or not. I guess it wouldn't be our call on that. We recognize that there would probably be some with any size development there considered affordable. So not a, you know, not a major consideration by us or, or requests by us. It would be outside our charter, certainly.
Okay, thank you. And my second question was based on the public hearing and thoughts in regards to, I know, I know we're not right, allowed to change the wording in any of this prior to public meeting, but are the friends of Lake Quanapowit and yourself amenable to potential suggestions that could be brought up once this, once this change is immediately brought to the town's consideration, right? So if we discuss potential changes in the wording that could be then brought up at town meeting subsequent to this bylaw change?
Yes, we are amenable. In fact, we think there may be some clarification around the limited business district. Relative to the other small parcel that is, we're not, we're not intending to include that. So there could, to see what the town will do about it, maybe suggested to make, put some language in there that describes the area as the lakeside limited business district. But I think we are prepared to look at what's in the best interest. I know we are prepared to look at what's in the best interest of the citizens and by, therefore of the town.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Joanne?
Yeah, is there any way you can put the, that Article 11 all on the one screen here?
This is the part that's changing. I think I'll have a difficult time getting to the other part because in the town warrant, you can see here's the top part of it. So can I get it all onto one screen?
So, yeah, it, it's just kind of hard to follow when I can't see the whole thing.
Understood. Let me, um, let me see if I could do some quick copy paste magic.
Hey, Bill, I, I believe it was, the article was emailed to us too, so you.
It was, and I was having problems with my email today and I'm not happy about it. So let me just, I think I have it all together. Let me reshare this. Okay. Close. Can, can you see that, Joanne? Okay?
Yeah, that's better.
So what I did was I pretty much copied and pasted it from the town, the warrant. Let me see if I can make it a little larger. There we go. All right.
Okay. So the part at the end in quotation marks where it says notwithstanding and ends with is allowed.
I don't know why this little, trying to get rid of that little copy paste thing. All right. So in quotations, notwithstanding.
Up to is allowed.
Is what's being added, correct?
That's being added to the current zoning bylaw wording?
Yes.
So.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Connolly, correct me if I'm misspeaking.
But I unfortunately can't see the, what you're putting up, Mr. Spalding. I, I have the article, but.
I'm, I'm highlighting the quotations, notwithstanding any other provision in this chapter down to 14 units per acre of lot area is allowed.
That's, that's essentially the change.
Yes.
In that we, we didn't, we just felt it was necessary to put in for, for information and clarity. You know, the, the dimensions that we, we were sinking, seeking relative to building acres or, you know, so on and so forth, but to the degree we could.
Okay, so, yeah, I, I get the point that you're trying to limit the, the number of residential units. It sounds like at the beginning it says prohibit certain residential uses. But then in the end, if you're adding that you're going to allow a maximum of 14 units per acre of lot, that's a lot less than the proposed 485 units, which is in plan, right?
Before you answer that, Bill, hold on. Joanne, I just want to be clear. The current zoning under B is 36 units per acre of lot area in parentheses with not more than 63 bedrooms per acre of lot area. So that would be changing the wording from 36 units to 14. I just want to make sure that's clear. Sorry, Bill, go ahead.
Thank you for that.
No, I, I think that is clear.
Yeah, because I think it needs to be clear what you want, the limit or the scope of the residential units, how many you're suggesting there be.
We are suggesting that it would match what is required by special permit one, which has that, that language.
Right. So under the density, A or one has 14 units, B, which is what this article proposal would be changing, would change it from 36 to 14 to match A.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure I follow all the A and B bit.
Let, go ahead. If you have another question, go ahead. What I'll do is I'll, I have it tabbed and open. I will pull up the zoning. Does anybody on the board, anybody else have any questions? Okay, while, maybe this is a good chance to grab some water. I am changing to our zoning. We use cookies. Good. So if I jump down here and pardon me as I fly through this 32. Housing mid-rise B. Let me see, what am I under? Multifamily mixed use. Lot size and density. So just to look at the way these columns are set up, the lot coverage, the open area, the footage, this is all covered underneath here. So if we, we go back up to A and B. I mean, am I in the right section? I believe I am.
Yeah, the 190-23 is there.
Yep. Just want to make sure. Double check. Two, 32. A and B. B, good. So one has condition, let's see, table use regulations. Notwithstanding. B. So Matt, might need your help with this. I think this is one of the irregularities that we've had or the contradictions that we've had between our paper copy and what's online.
I am not surprised.
Right, because this does not look like, this is definitely not the same wording that's under here.
Well, this, again, Bill, this would be something that the applicant should be, you know, going through because they're the ones proposing the zoning change, so.
Understood.
I would assume that you would have.
Yet I brought that up. We have our book and in the book section under 190-32B. It clearly says under the density under number two, that the maximum, two A is the maximum overall density for garden apartments and attached dwellings in the MR1 district shall be 14 units per acre of lot area. And that's with not more than 28 bedrooms per acre. And B, which is what Article 11 is changing, the maximum overall density for mid-rise apartments or a combination of mid-rise and garden apartments or attached dwellings in the MR2 district, business district, limited business district, industrial district and limited industrial district shall be 36 units per acre of lot area with not more than 63 bedrooms per acre of lot area. So this article zoning bylaw proposal would change the 36 to a 14. That's really the only thing under B that's changing.
Well, Mr., Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, in the current published town online, current, I believe certified by the clerk's office, we are talking about the possibilities in the limited business district to allow multiple residences. And what we are doing and the, the proposed change says it is that we are in the use table. As it's referenced here, 190-23-B, we are, we are taking out the option for mid-rise apartments, which by definition are larger to know. And then if we are allowing as described under MR1, the lower limit, garden apartments, the attached dwellings are such, we were wanted to be clear that that restriction would be the indicated 14 units per acre. So we are not restricting use by this article. It will allow multi-residences. We are saying that those multi-residences, if allowed by special permit, should be limited to 14 units per acre. We did not see any references to your A and your B. I can't really comment on that, but essentially I just described what the intent of this does and what we think the, the language of this does. The intent is and the language of this does.
Thank you, Bill. Were there any other questions from our board members?
I just have one, so, so Bill Connolly, you, you do have a certified copy of, of the zoning that you will be changing? Or is this just taken off offline? Because we have, we have identified some discrepancies from what was actually intended to be the zoning and what was inputted online. So I just want to make sure you have a, you have a copy of absurd, a certified copy of the correct zoning that you would be changing.
I believe we do, Matt. We, whatever was online relative to the table, we believe that it was up to date and accurate and the changes to the table as described will be will be correct.
All right, so you can see some of the unintended consequences that, that come about things in the electronic world. So, you know, that's why I'm so hesitant on advancing this so quickly without actually going through embedding in, in really dissecting this entire thing to see how it affects not only this zone, but potentially others.
Understood.
Thank you, Matt, thank you, Bill. Before opening the Florida public comment, I'd like to give the opportunity to Mr. Peter Tam and his team to speak on behalf of, I believe, the developers. You can correct me if you'd like, but please go ahead and unmute. And anybody else who is not speaking now, if you could please mute, that would be great.
Chairman, if possible, this is Jade Arnie of CCNF. I'd like to speak on behalf of CCNF before Peter makes any remarks.
Sure.
First of all, I want to thank you for allowing that. And if we are afforded the opportunity to continue with planning a project here, I want you to know that we are deeply committed to working with the Friends of the Lake, with town leadership, with your board, with the ZBA, with the Conservation Commission and with town agencies. I would like to note that we have not filed a plan for this project. And when we were first introduced to the project, what we did in fact was consult with the Friends of the Lake and others, with town administrators and town agencies, which we have continued to do. And we have not yet filed any plan. And in fact, I will renew my offer, which I've made before to Bill and others, that we would like to continue to work with him and others on a plan. We did not intend and do not intend to try and force something without proper consideration. When we began to work on this, we studied the documents created by your board and by others in the town of Wakefield. They have a lot of depth and a lot of information. We had understood from these documents that this particular area was an area favored for mixed-use development, favored for residential development, favored as an area proximate to commuter rail stations. And, you know, we did notice that all of the area at this time is in fact commercial. It's older commercial. The building on the site is obsolete. The other uses are the Lakeside Office Park Development, a car dealership and 100 Quanapawat Parkway. At this time, there is no residential or mixed-use components in the area. I also would note that while we have discussed some plans and concept, this is a 25-acre site and your calculations are correct. As zoned, subject to a special permit, it is zoned for up to 870 units. And I'm not suggesting by any means that we have ever thought that a project of that scale was appropriate here. And in fact, as we have talked to the Friends and others, what we've done is tried to introduce improvements to that plan. We have diminished the density and the number of units. But we've also pulled back any potential project in terms of setbacks. We've added public green space. We understand this is a special site and we have been making improvements and we had intended. And we do intend to continue to make such improvements that are responsible, responsive to the special character in sight. I, I want to note one thing that it would be lovely to consider a site like this and an area like this in isolation and from a sort of virgin state, but this is not such a site. It is a site that is not quite, I'd say, in a blighted condition. The building was built in the 1960s. It really is obsolete for any commercial purposes. It would take significant investment to make it competitive for commercial purposes. And the market has moved away from standalone, single-site buildings. It has very definitely moved to more mixed-use and amenity-supported areas. The, the existing 10 acres that is paved is wholly obsolete for modern environmental standards. There's no drainage recharge. There is no treatment of gas oil separators for drainage that goes to the lake. There's no management of the maintenance that goes on to the operations of the site. The conditions along the lakefront edge of the site and on the lakefront itself are, are poor. There are no public amenities, there's poor lighting. There is very poor pavement and the condition of the parkway itself is deplorable. At this time, the project produces some modest tax revenues. I would say that the project has been vacant for more than a few years and in its current condition would either remain vacant or would degenerate to much lower quality uses that really don't belong in such a location. So it, it, the, the attempt we were making and we would like to make is to bring something in that is of the quality that the town seeks. We begin with the fact that wishing that it was a pretty site now and capable of supporting Class A commercial development isn't something that can happen. The markets now are very demanding. The markets, particularly with the pandemic, the markets look to technology companies to drive office demand. What drives tech is innovation. What drives innovation is talent. And talent today requires mixed-use environments. It requires an ability to walk to work. I anticipate that that tendency will graduate more post-pandemic. And it demands amenities and amenities need after 5:00 PM support. If you look up and down 128, the communities that have successfully primed the pump with that kind of development have been successful in rebuilding their commercial tax bases. You can point to Needham. As of 2000, that park in Needham, Needham Business Park was essentially dead. The Selectmen and I collaborated on a friendly 40B at their suggestion to build 350 units in the park in the hope that by attracting younger professionals, we could attract better companies. Subsequently, TripAdvisor made its headquarters there, NBC Universal has made its headquarters there. There have been amenities introduced and better landscaping and site flow and improved, major improvements in, in traffic and access. So we believe that this can be a, a major contribution to the good of the lake and the site. We are diligent developers. We partner very closely with the communities we work with. Right now, in one community that is divided in its commercial and residential base by a MBTA commuter rail slice. In that community, we have volunteered to lead the creation and development of a pedestrian bridge over those tracks. We try to be innovative. In the course of my career, I have started at least four shuttle systems in Cambridge, East Cambridge, Alewife. I'm proudest of Needham because we started with nothing and it is now a very robust system going to and from the green line. We tend to like to work in the communities that we partner with in a way that is broader than the narrow confines of the site. We really try and bring all the skills that I picked up over 40 years and the financial resources. And we attempt to address things the community would like us to address if the community so wants us to address in a way that the community benefits. We look here for enhanced public access, a safer environment, considerably enhanced environmental investment for the lake in terms of how we treat rooftop rainwater discharge, cleaning water before it's recharged. And we try to be very respectful of all that is needed to be put in these buildings to reduce things like noise, visuals of anything like mechanicals. And in general, I think we succeed. I don't ask you to take my word for this. I would be very happy to ask you to be in touch with the people that have worked with us around greater Boston, whether it's State Representative Hagerty. We collaborated with him to solve a problem in the city of Woburn because of its superfund. We are now developing a major mixed-use project in the superfund. It's the first in the nation mixed-use project. It's next to the Anderson Regional Transportation Terminal. Happy to have you talk with Mayor Koch in Quincy or Mayor Walsh in Boston or the City Councilors of Cambridge. It is not a narrow vision we bring to this. And I had thought that our approach had been collaborative. I apologize if in any way it didn't seem so. And I reiterate that we're here to work with you, with the town leaders, the town agencies and Friends of the Lake and others to see if there is a project that can meet the objectives of the community and be feasible for development.
Thank you, Mr. Darty. I know, and I do appreciate that you did take the time to look on our website. And, and I imagine the reports and studies that you're referencing would be our economic development plan, like from 2004, our there was a housing one that I know we were open space. Production 2005 to 2010, and then there was a housing.
Was approved by.
I know we put a lot of resources.
18% inclusionary affordable, which is a robust inclusionary requirement. It adores that of Boston. It's competitive with the highest inclusionary requirements of any, of many communities in greater Boston. And we would, of course, completely adhere to that. But yes, all of those plans, and we can see that the potential was there to much improve the neighborhood that neighbors this lake. And to be something that is, you know, more than a concrete structure by the side of the road when one travels 128. To, to provide something that has the appearance of class and grace and, and interest for people that come and go in this area.
Thank you. Mr. Tam?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few comments to add to Jay's comments. And, and for the record, Peter Tam of Goulston and Store is co-counsel for Jay and his company, Cabot Cabot and Forbes, along with Brian McGrail, who I think is also available for questions. We, we submitted to you just this afternoon, a, a letter with outlining, I think, a number of our concerns and I'll, I'll just hit on some of the major ones. But as Jay suggests, our intent is, and, and he's got a first-rate team that is in a conceptual design stage. So without a project that's been filed with your board or ZBA or the Conservation Commission, there is no project at this stage. It's a conceptual idea. And the time that Jay and his team have, have put in has been really the infancy of a project and a long process that would play out and, and likely will play out with the town. That'll involve all stakeholders. And, and, and that will be a special permit process. That's a discretionary special permit with standards that are in, in there to protect the town and, and the public benefit. So in a process like this, in a rezoning process like this, the, the haste, which has been acknowledged by the proponents to race to get this to town meeting, um, I, I, I'm not quite sure where that haste is coming from because there is no project on the table. There is an idea on the table. There's always an opportunity for a special town meeting. And all of these shortcuts are leading to some pretty significant issues. And all of these shortcuts are leading to some pretty significant issues. And that is putting aside the fact that this is targeted to our client's property, but it envelops an entire zoning district. So putting aside the merit of the article or articles. With respect to the articles, I appreciate the organization's recognition and the proponent's recognition that the initial article, the first article of the two, was overstepping. I think that was the word that was used, was overstepping their bounds. But I would ask the board to consider whether the second article is any better. The focus on density is somewhat illusory. Because, and I don't expect everyone on this meeting to understand this, but you can look at your zoning article, whether it's the certified version or the version online. And you can understand that a garden-style apartment at a density of 14 units an acre is all very well and good, in theory, until you look at the other bulk and dimensional requirements that are associated with that use that would effectively preclude any meaningful residential development on this site. Thirty-five feet in height, no more than three stories. Lot coverage and open space requirements that are really going to preclude redevelopment for residential. So it takes, either of these articles takes off the table any viable opportunity for redevelopment, not just of this site, but of any property in the limited business district for apartments. Now, what are the implications there? This site, as Jay suggests, is not going to be impacted because we've already taken steps to preserve or invest our rights under the existing zoning. That was zoning that we relied upon in starting to plan for the redevelopment of this property. We're not alone in those efforts. But as Jay and Mr. Chairman, as you have pointed out, we also relied on and want to further the interests, and these are public interests, that are set forth in your master plan and in your housing production plan. Your housing production plan, which was a public effort that your board put, what I understand to be an incredible amount of time, and invested public resources in for ultimate approval by DHCD. And you've made progress in those housing production goals. In that plan, there are a number of housing strategies and goals. It also recognizes the limited developable property that remains in town and the various zoning restrictions that are in place all over town. And what it does is it identifies this specific area as among the key areas for meaningful housing production to further those plans. It actually, there's a whole section on it. And that focuses on both market and affordable units that would further and possibly achieve the 10% affordability requirement that the state imposes as a threshold. That is critically important for the town to gain control over your own housing destiny well into the future. So you're not reacting to every single housing project. This is critical in 2020 because the denominator is going to change based on the number of housing units, year-round housing units in town. A project in this area, whether it's on my client's site or anywhere up and down this district, can have a meaningful impact. And this zoning change, either one of these, would inhibit it but for our vesting our rights under the current zoning.
Peter, the board's been extraordinarily patient, and I think you've set forth the major points that you and I discussed.
Yeah, that, I appreciate it, Jay. That's really, there's a lot to consider here. And Jay, I think you're right. I've taken enough time, and I know there's a lot of the public that wants to express their own interest. But our interest is in working with the town. I think Jay's made that clear, and we intend to do that. And we can appreciate the board being in a very difficult position here. So thank you very much for the time.
And I do want to conclude our part of this by reemphasizing that. We, as I said, did not file. We're in the process of a consultation with friends and others and town agencies and town leaders. And that's a process we are prepared to continue. It's by no means some kind of immutable plan. We think it is something that can be done in such a way that is a significant net benefit to the lake and to the town of Lakefield. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for the time you've given us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty. Thank you, Mr. Tam. And, you know, as an architect, I did go to school at the Voke here and study drafting and design and would walk around the lake and break heart in different places and really understand how important these features are, not just to our town, but to visitors, to the economic development, to everything. So this is a really big deal for us. So I do appreciate the amount of time that you're putting in, and I hope that continues. Before we go to public, anybody on the board have any comments to Mr. Tam or Mr. Doherty or any questions or clarifications? Thank you. I do see a few hands up. I see Brown and Delavope, and then Noah. Brown, if you want to speak, go ahead and unmute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to this board again for.
One second. Sorry to interrupt. I know there's been a lot of time by the people presenting, but a lot of people might want to speak. So what I'd like to propose is that we keep your first round of comments to under a minute. And then we can come back after other people speak to come back to those comments. I like to think that would be fair.
Thank you. I'll proceed. Again, thank you to the board for hearing these articles. These articles allow the reasonable development that the public supports to protect our lake and subsequently the character of our town. That this is one of the very first efforts that directly addresses the rampant overdevelopment in Wakefield. And the citizens really need an opportunity to weigh in on this. And so I do encourage this board to vote positively on these so that town can vote on them. And to remind that, you know, all the niceties in the world with the development are not going to protect our lake. From experience, we've seen this all over town. And if our lake is not protected, subsequently, the rest of the town is not protected. Urbanization hurts communities, and this is what this article is trying to do that so few have tried to do before, and that is take a positive, concrete step to protect our lake without violating any extreme norms. So we're not really here to hear the details of a proposed project or hear the defense of a proposed project. We're really here to discuss the meaning of the article and whether or not this board, how this board is going to vote so that the people of Wakefield can weigh in on this. And that's the most important thing is for the citizens to support this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Brown. And so let's revise that to two minutes, only because I was keeping track, and that was a minute 41, and I don't want to feel like anybody's being rushed. I do want to give you time. So let's change that to two minutes. Noah?
Hello, Mr. Chairperson. Sorry, this is my first time at a town meeting. This might be a little brutal.
Sorry, I didn't say this earlier, but please state your full name and your address.
Oh, sorry. Noah Thompson, 670 Main Street. So, Mr. Chairperson, I'm of the opinion that we should not, or that you should not certify these two zoning amendments. Like, as the developer stated in our own town council, that even if these pass at the meeting this Saturday, it will have no effect to the development of the site because the proponent has filed the A and R and preliminary subdivision plans. So, and as you discussed, you know, at the beginning of this meeting, there are so many questions to be answered still because of the vagueness and the rush process of this. And then so, and it's explicitly targeted at this one development too, but this can have wide-ranging implications to properties, you know, throughout the town of Wakefield. And, you know, even though, you know, we like to protect, you know, the character of the town, we do have to acknowledge that, you know, we're only, not even 10 miles away, you know, from, you know, this large metropolitan area. And then our housing, we're in the midst of a housing crisis. I mean, I was walking down the road and saw the starter house, and it was unrenovated, 900 square foot, you know, almost half a million dollars. I mean, I would like to buy in this town one day. I mean, I have roots going back to this town, and I don't know how I could ever afford that. And I do also agree that the lakefront, at least that that property is in need of improvement. I think we should use this as some, you know, to leverage this development to, you know, get some much-needed improvements there, and it could be a benefit for all, you know, residents and then future residents also. Thank you.
Carl D., if you could state your full name and your address?
Carl Dunlap, 18 King Street. Thank you to the planning board for taking public comment on this. So I guess a couple of comments here. One is, you know, I heard this is one of the last large, well, I'd like to state that this is one of the last large commercial properties here in Wakefield, zone that way. And if it goes to a residential property with over 400 units, there's really not much room for anything else to go there. So that goes away. So if we change that zoning or the special zoning permit is issued, that commercial tax base goes away. So although Mr. Doherty stated he'd like to help build a commercial tax base, you know, once he's taken away that property, has made it residential for all these multi-units, you know, where else are we going to build? You know, this is a special business district that has that. And if it becomes residential, that goes away. The other question I would have is who's the current owner of this 200 Quanapote Parkway? Or is Cabot-Cabot and Forbes just have a contract to buy it conditional upon approval of, you know, the zoning? So the last special permit issued was for a research or testing lab to Waterstone Wakefield LLC. So I'd like to really understand from the several attorneys and outsiders on this call, who owns the property currently, and does Cabot and Cabot and Forbes own it? Or do they just have a contract to buy it conditional upon the acceptance of a permit? And then, you know, lastly, again, you know, if it was stated a mixed-use proposal, what else is the mixed use behind, besides the 480-odd residential permit, you know, 480 units? I agree, 870 units that Mr. Doherty stated is unreasonable. Most of the people, the reason why this call is happening is the residents of Wakefield feel that 480 units is not an appropriate density for this. And I think that's what the zoning bylaw proposed by the Friends of Lake Quanapote is trying to propose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap. Good questions. And I'd like to take a moment to have one of the developers or attorneys address the question for who owns it. I just want to be clear. And if it is mixed-use, what else would be there? We don't want to go too far into a presentation on what would go there. But if anybody could give a short summary of this?
Yes, we have a purchase and sale contract controlling the property. I'm not at liberty to get into the details of it, but there's certainly sufficient latitude to try and execute the project that we've discussed with you. We did originally introduce more features that I would characterize as public amenities. There is more desire today for amenities that are involved with fitness, craft breweries, things that people can engage in and where they can meet and congregate. So our theory was to offer some of those amenities. As we discussed it with Friends of the Lake and others, most people that we talked to asked that it be removed. There was concern that any kind of activities that go on after hours would disturb the tranquility of the lake. And as I noted earlier, we have tried to be responsive in terms of making changes to the concept. So we removed that. One of the things I would hope would happen is that there might be broader considerations of what is appropriate and whether or not there is an interest. On the other hand, we haven't had heard from other people who use the lake that they would much prefer to have a place where they could go in the site or a cup of coffee or a sandwich. And, you know, we're open to that, and our hope is that in working with the town boards and ZBA and town leadership and other citizens, that if that is a desired consequence, then we can accommodate it. But in the initial consultations we've had, it was asked that we remove that type of amenity, public amenity.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty. Mr. Mitchell?
Want to say thank you to the board and to the chairman for introducing the meeting well and explaining the Zoom details.
Thank you. Your address, just, I know most people do know your address, but.
Yes. Yeah, Robert Mitchell, 6 Balding Street, Wakefield. Thank you. And I want to say Jay Doherty and his team has been great. They've spent, they sent out a hand to me. I've had some conversations with them. They're a top-notch group, so nobody's questioning that at all. So they should feel comfortable in that. Basically, what I see is all the zoning articles in Wakefield have been created by the legislative body of town meeting. And I think the lake is such a critical resource to this community that the planning board should vote. So the legislative body, which has written all the zoning articles in Wakefield, has an opportunity to hear, as we're doing tonight, and vote on the article. I think that CCNF and Peter Tam, and Peter said he represented the owners. Are you representing the owner of that property? Could you ask him to correct that or clarify that? But we can do that after my speech.
Yes, thank you.
Yep, thank you. And I just think it's critical that the townspeople get an opportunity to vote on this up or down. If they voted down, maybe that's a good thing for CCNF. Maybe that will be more of an open hand to their future development and so forth, and continue the good conversation we've had with them. I don't believe that this site is not, Jay mentioned the site is not amenable to, I think he's called a single site. Well, we've got the Hallmark Building on the other side of town that just went in that you might not be familiar with. So we do do single-site developments. And in fact, DRT came out and did some presentations. They were in fact thinking of, Brian McGrail can speak to this, changing the zoning in Wakefield to allow for life sciences development for single-site use. So zoning changes in that parcel were actually contemplated by the current owner of the property. So this is nothing new. I agree with Bronn early about overdevelopment is a big concern, and this lake is just critical to our community. In fact, the townspeople spent over a million dollars to buy, to build the Gertrude Spalding Park. And with such an important resource, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which is larger than any organization here, granted us through the Division of Conservation Services, several grants, at least $250,000, maybe $500,000, and we got state approval for that.
Mr. Doherty, wrap it up. I just want to make sure people have time. Sorry.
So, yeah, so I just want to say thank you to everybody. And I would just like to see this, have the townspeople have an opportunity to vote on this Saturday. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And do we want to address the question, Mr. Mitchell, to Mr. Tam, to Attorney Tam?
Mr. Chairman, if you're asking, to be clear, I represent Cabot Cabin and Forbes.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure the question was addressed. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, the only other comment I'll make is we're, I can appreciate your board is getting a little sidetracked with, you know, a focus on 200 Quanapoot, but this is really your hearing on two articles that will change the zoning fundamentally within the limited business district.
Understood. Thank you. I do not see any other hands. If somebody is having an issue not being able to raise their hand, if you want to unmute to speak, that would be wonderful.
I thought I raised my hand.
Karen Fowler?
Yes, just a few things.
If you can say your address, please.
I'm sorry. Karen Fowler, 222 Lowell Street. And again, thank you for taking this, this time. I just want to, to focus particularly on the density issue. That is what I, I find that is the biggest concern. Where, when we, and I also have compliments for CCNF. We really appreciate our time. And I do think they're a quality developer. But the, the density, we kept saying it's too big. It's too big. And we were given the understanding that, well, we may not be able to do anything if it's smaller. All right. But what they were proposing conceptually was probably more than twice as big as any housing complex in the whole town. We're putting it on the lake and people are extremely concerned about that. There is a strong feeling, as, as Mr. Mitchell was saying, that there needs to be a chance for people to vote on this. And given the, the fast, the way, the fast paced it appeared to us and things were working, we needed to have some way to demonstrate this for long term, but also possibly for the ZBA not to be left holding a bag. You know, five people having to decide this. So that is, that's the background. The other thing is, we are hoping that a good discussion at town meeting and a vote on this will prompt the longer term planning that we all know needs to happen. The town has been remiss in not thinking this through before we were presented with a large project. So that's part of our motivation. We are not against long-term planning. We don't like the, the pace that we've, we've, we've been faced with. But the town needs to have a say and the conversation needs to be started at town meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. And thank you for keeping your comment short and precise. I, I know this has come up in the planning board in the past. The different reports and plans that were put together are available on the town website. And they do go into an incredible amount of depth and information. I know some of them are a little outdated now with the stats back to 2010 is the last information that brings everything up to speed with the amount of units available and the potential with more mixed income, affordable housing. And our planning board also looked at an overlay district and how do we have mixed use within a certain perimeter of downtown or the train stop. So it, it has come into a lot of consideration. And, and I don't know if you remember my campaign to get onto the planning board back in 2014. I'm sure you don't, but it's really about trying to make Wakefield more walkable. Trying to allow the different nodes in Wakefield, not just the west side where I live. West side is so easy to get to the lake, so easy to get Albion Street to downtown. But that's not the same for Greenwood and that's not the same for other sections. And it would be wonderful to somehow make that work. And, and that's, that's part of what we are. Now that we're a full board of five people, I really hope. And we have a new economic developer director. I'm so excited to move forward with this. So I just can't even express how excited I am to what the future is. And I know this is really important. There is one person, Chris Croon, who has his hand up, who hasn't spoken, if you'd like to unmute.
Thank you, Bill. My name's Chris Croone. I'm at 114 Main Street.
Pronouncing names incorrectly. I apologize.
That's fine. That's fine. And I'd like to thank the board for having the meeting tonight. We are one of the few on this call whose house looks directly out upon this proposed development. Out my window now, I can, I can see the building at, at issue. And regrettably, we have not been approached at all by, by Cabot Cabin and Forbes or any of its representatives to participate in any of the meetings or discussions that have had to been held to date. So I'd like to invite Mr. Tam, Mr. Doherty, and Ms. McGreal to include us in that dialogue. But more particular to the, to the question before the board, I guess this evening, with respect to Article 11. I know some concern was raised earlier with respect to potential vagaries in the language. You know, and in particular, what was meant by 14 units, whether the size and other restrictions. The point I guess I'd like to make is just simply, these are, these are terms that have meaning in the context of other provisions that are familiar, that are in the town's zoning provisions. And to the extent that there are vagaries, they of course can be worked out pretty readily in town meeting and through discussion with, with the townspeople. So I'd encourage the board to move forward with the article for town meeting.
I have my hand raised again, but it'll have my name.
Bill, I think you're still on mute.
Thank you. Yes, I was on mute. A little bit of background noise. And thank you for keeping your comments short. Julie Scott?
Hi there. Can you hear me? Julie Scott, 75 Elm Street, Wakefield?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay. I'd, I'd like to read a bit from page seven from the 2004 Wakefield Economic Development Master Plan.
Okay.
Where it states that not all development, however, will be beneficial for Wakefield's future. Clear guidelines must be established to balance the public interest with private gain. And I think that's what, if you forward this on to Saturday's discussion at town meeting, that's what you would be doing. Some recently constructed condominium, and this is from 2004, condominium developments undermine the character of the community. And incentives and controls must be developed to channel new construction in more appropriate directions. And I must say, I think that's what FOLQ is trying to do tonight. It goes on to say that residential developments are taxed at a much lower rate than commercial buildings, suggesting that some uses should be encouraged over others. This master plan offers a range of development options and opportunities, along with an evaluation of their fiscal and physical benefits and appropriateness. They are intended as models for the kind of revenue enhancing developments that are in Wakefield's long-term interest. I've attended all the meetings for Cabot Cabin and Forbes, both in person before the COVID crisis and online. And I've been pleased to see that there's been a 20%, approximately a 20% reduction in size in their plan since January of 2020. But 485 units on our crown jewel in Wakefield on the lake, I don't understand why that's appropriate. It's not even, it's so much larger than anything we have on Autobahn Road type situation. It would be more appropriate out of sight. The people living there in that area would have a lovely view of our church steeples on the other side of the lake. But anybody living along the lakeside, anybody on the common would be looking at, at buildings. And I, I don't see how that doesn't benefit anybody but the people in the development business. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. And I, I do want to make one more, actually no. Okay, I do see another hand up. Beth Gru?
Hi, thank you. This is Beth Gru, 24 Marion Road. I want to also thank you for having this meeting tonight. I just wanted to go back to something that Noah raised when he spoke about the A and R, which I think is approval not required?
It is, yes.
Does that mean if this article is passed at town meeting, that it doesn't mean anything? Or what does that mean?
What it means is that the A and R plans, which were presented at our scheduled planning board meeting last Tuesday, were endorsed by our board. They met all the regulations and rules, so we, we have to endorse them. We also accepted preliminary subdivision plans at that same meeting. It's, it's something that we do when we're presented with them. It's with that, it does lock in the existing, the current zoning bylaws when those plans are endorsed and accepted. So yes, the 123 A and R plans that we endorsed and the proposed subdivision plans, preliminary subdivision plans that we accepted will hold to the zoning bylaws from last week. So whatever happens at town meeting on Saturday, those projects will not be affected by any approval or non-approval of the zoning bylaw changes. Did that answer your question?
Um, well, so what does the article do then, if it's passed?
The article moves forward with any limited business, zoned areas to reduce the density of multifamily housing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. So there are some hands up. Ed Green, are you waving? Yes, if you want to unmute and speak, go ahead.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for having this meeting. First of all,
Sorry, your address, please, Mr. Green?
Ed Green, 238 Main Street. And I'd like to say everything Julie Scott said is right on the mark. That's what I wanted to say to begin with. But you know, the word project kept coming up and having, I've lived here, owned property in Wakefield for 46 years. Before that, I lived in communities with projects. I mean, real projects. And the density, and you know, this was always thought of never as a town that had a housing shortage. But, you know, we're treating it like we need more, more units and we don't. I mean, this, this character of this town is entirely, you know, very desirable the way it is. And I don't see this project or all the projects going on right now, there are many going on right now, doing anything to enhance the character of Wakefield. But, uh, so I would hopefully, I would hope that the board would look upon this as if nothing to do with the current projects that are planned or on the table, at least to put a limit to future projects, because we've got to put a stop to this. And thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Green. I, I am acknowledging that a few people that have already spoken have their hands up. But I do want to go to Carla Monahan first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Carla Monahan of Sharon and Logen, LP, 101 Federal, Boston, Mass. To the point raised by one of the speakers, Mr. Chairman, my client does in fact own the property. I represent Wakefield 200 LLC and WBAM Limited Partnership, the owners of 50 Quanapoot Parkway. And we are directly impacted by these potential articles, now article. We do support many of the comments made, including those by Noah, as well as CCNF. It really is a vital importance. As a former member of Belmont's Planning Board, I've been in the shoes of these planning board members, have gone through comprehensive planning, which takes numbers of years at times, and making certain that zoning articles that are presented are fully vetted over time, given the deliberative nature that's required with full public comment by any and all property owners that would be impacted directly, as well as the community that would be impacted by those changes. So comprehensive planning has absolute need in these situations. And the difficulty, with all due respect to those that think it is easy to legislate on town floor, it is not. Town meetings are not set up for this purpose. It's exactly what the planning board's role is. So with all due respect, I thoroughly encourage this board not to vote favorably or disfavorably, but not to take a vote, to send this to town meeting. I think that that would be the worst situation. A number of us have already protected ourselves in turning zoning freezes as well, as has been mentioned. So this is not going to impact the number of folks that are in there. But for purposes of Wakefield's, you know, looking forward with respect to this planning and doing a deliberative nature of that, I would really encourage folks to consider the special meeting process that has been suggested and that you take that time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Monahan. And the special meeting that I believe Mr. Scott brought up during our special meeting to set up the special meeting, the public hearing, I believe Mr. Scott had a really, really good proposition where he suggested or a solution, sorry, let me turn my timer off, to take the time to understand what this article needs to be. And then when we do figure it out, have a special town meeting to review and vote. And I, I know that, that was something that really caught my attention. So thank you for bringing that up. And just to be clear, if you did miss the beginning of the meeting, yes, our planning board tonight, after we close the public hearing, we will, we have a couple of options on the table. We can choose not to report. And both of these articles would not go to town meeting, would not be heard at town meeting. Or we do choose to report and we either recommend favorable action or not. And, and that's something that we'll decide after we're done. I do want to see, I see, let's see, Carla, there's other people that have raised their hand that have already talked. So I just want to give a chance to anybody out there who can't raise their blue hand under participants.
Can I just say that I have Jim Scott here beside me, so I'm raising my hand, but it's really Jim Scott that would like to speak?
Well, that's perfect because that's what I was hoping would happen. Thank you.
That's good. We're actually holding hands, you know, so that's how. I'd like to compliment you, Mr. Chairman, for the way you're conducting the meeting, because this is the role of the planning board and we've got a lot of work to do in the town of Wakefield.
Thank you.
I agree with all the previous speakers, my daughter Julie, Bob Mitchell, and Bronn Delavoppi. So as I say at town meeting, I am the soul of brevity. So that, those are my comments and keep up the good work.
Thank you. If you could remind us of your address, that would be wonderful.
75 Elm Street.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Conley, do you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, just addressing somewhat Ms. Gru's comments on what's the, what's the point if essentially the actions by the property owners have frozen the zoning? We, we submitted the articles unaware that the zoning was, was effectively going to be frozen. But, so we, we're acting in good faith to, to get the articles, however well or poorly as being determined to, to town meeting, however they were written to town meeting, to further reinforce or not our overwhelming feeling and input from the town people as a way to inform the next phase of the development plans when they do happen, which will focus on the zoning board of appeals. So, you know, we think town government and town boards should, should recruit input. You've said it yourself. You're happy to see so many people here. And we really feel it's a, it's a way to get to town meeting, get it discussed, get some perhaps language that may have to be improved, work through a bit, but it is the place to at least take a vote. And, you know, we're not deterred by that these may not affect, this article may not affect the development, but we will remind the development, but we will remind that zoning board of appeals and every property owner in that district has to get approval for residential. So, you know, we don't feel that it's an injustice to to look at doing something relative to zoning that would make that approval they seek at least limited to which we feel, and you can hear from many, many people, that the sizing would be something that the town would regret, the citizens would regret. The residents of that development probably would, would regret not being integrated into town in any way or welcomed into town in any way. And so we think it has an impact. We think the planning board should act. And we respect everybody in this meeting, Cabot, Cabot and Forbes and Mr. Dougherty and, and others have said it. They are a class company and they're represented by professionals. But we really think that we want to create more public awareness. Let the public weigh in on this. And then let's see what can be developed around good planning and good development and good result for the town.
Thank you, Mr. Conley.
Thank you.
Beth Groo, would you like to respond to that? I see your hand just went up.
Yes, sorry, I, I didn't mean to imply that it shouldn't go to town meeting. I definitely think it should and I hope it goes with a favorable. I was just asking a question about what that A and R meant as far as this.
Thank you. I see Brian McGreal, your hands up. You haven't spoken yet. And I, I am putting the time, I am keeping track of the timer.
Sure, appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the record, Brian McGreal, 81 Outlook Road. I do represent Cabot, Cabot and Forbes. I do represent Waterstone also, the owner of 200. And I represent the owner of 50 Quanapawit. And I'm here with Carla tonight. We're working together on that matter. Before I, I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, before I get into my time, I need a clarification because I think there's some confusion. As it's been presented, there's been discussion about something called special permit one and special permit two.
Okay.
And I have no idea what that is. And I think it's critical for anything that would be considered.
Okay, well, I, I was hoping that I clarified that by talking about MR-1 and MR-2.
Can you go back to the, can you go back to the bylaw if you wouldn't mind?
I could. I think I still have that up. Well, remember, it's not quite worded on the certified copy that I have in hand. It's not worded the same. I'm going to share the article.
Well.
In here, there's nothing talking about, it just says limited business.
Can I, could I possibly have control of the screen to bring up the bylaw?
Yes, you can. Hold on, let me. And let me make sure it's set to, yep, you can go ahead and share.
Okay. Let me just figure out.
Is your concern Attorney McGreal that?
I think the concern is, can you see the, can you see the, my?
Yes.
On webpage?
Yep.
So, so the concern is, this is our, this is our town website. And this is view zoning bylaws. And this is our official bylaw. And if you go to 19032, and this is critical because I think there's been a real misunderstanding on how this was drafted. Basically, 19032 went to town meeting in November of 2015. And it was significantly revamped. And the A and B that is being referred to by Mr. Conley doesn't exist anymore. It's not there. That's been replaced by B, which deals with density. And it's not based on acres anymore. Back, back in 2015, when the housing production plan was done and when the town planner revised the zoning, it went to town meeting. And it, it determined that the density was based on square footage. It has nothing to do with, with per acre anymore. So you know, that's something that you can send this to town meeting, but it's, it's, it's amending a bylaw that doesn't exist anymore as far as using that, using that terminology. If you look at the density now, it, there's two controls. It says we're housing with a mid-rise garden or attached dwellings, a combination of the same are proposed. And that's the railroad district. So if you're within 2,500 feet of a railroad, minimum of 750 square feet per lot area, per unit, otherwise 1,200 square feet. So this is our official bylaw. This was, and this was amended in November of 2015. So I, I think, you know, I, I just wanted to make a clarification on that because when I was hearing special permit one and special permit two, it, it, it didn't make any sense to me. And I think it was what, what Bill, Bill Conley might have been referring to was the old bylaw A and B, depending on, you know, what, what district you were in, it was based on acres.
Right.
To me, that's a fundamental, fundamental problem with this bylaw that, you know, I don't see how you can send it to town meeting the way it's based on, on, on a prior bylaw. Now, if I can, if I can make some points in, and I would like to commend everything. And I'd like to thank Mr. Conley. I said at the last meeting, he's a true gentleman and thank him for everything that he does for the town. And I would suggest that the, the planning board should not close this public hearing tonight. You shouldn't close it. And you shouldn't send this to town meeting. You should keep it open because tonight has been a very productive meeting in discussing a number of things, but the main focus is on the bylaw. And this, this hearing should be kept open because certainly the bylaws is written and not ready to go to town meeting. I mean, that's pretty clear. Input should be here. This is the process before your board. It's not a town meeting. Things aren't written on town meeting floor. They're, they're amended on town meeting floor, which is absolute chaos. And that's when major mistakes happen. So you need to be very careful about that. Attorney Tam spoke about the housing production plan. And the housing production plan was written in 2015 by Abacus Planners in conjunction with your board and Paul Reedus. It's a hundred and fifty-nine page document. And it specifically calls for, for the development of this area. And, and you know, and you know, don't be mad at Cabot, Cabot and Forbes when, with, with some of the stuff that they're proposing because it specifically says, it, it's, it's very interesting. It specifically references, it references, and I'm going to bring it up on the screen for everybody to see because this is really interesting. This is it. This is, this is part of the housing production plan. And it talks about large scale district strategy. Look at this. The intersection of 128 and not, not have 128 adjacent to the commuter rail line is an ideal location for dense transit oriented development, including housing. Almost exactly, exactly halfway between North Ave and Reading commuter rail stop will be an excellent location for additional rail stop and parking facility. And then it goes on, which is interesting. You know, this is our housing production plan and it shows this site. It highlights it.
Is there a time limit?
Yeah, you said that two minutes now.
Well, I mean.
Is it over four and a half?
My, I don't think my two minutes was taken up on asking those questions and, and.
Your two minutes is enough on this part right now.
I tried to, just trying to give folks information. That's all I'm trying to do because when, when in.
One more minute, Brian.
Folks should see this because this talks about the TOD opportunity and not that. And look at it, Lakeside Office Park adjacent to 128 and North Ave and the commuter rail is a dynamic opportunity site for transit oriented smart growth development with immediate access to the highway without causing congestion on town streets, possible commuter, commuter rail stop. Density could be dramatically increased. And the entire mixed use lakeside development is an exciting possibility with jobs, restaurants, both affordable and market rate housing. So you know, this is, these are the plans that, you know, Cabot, Cabot and Forbes looks at when they come into town, our housing production plan. I would suggest that you shouldn't recommend anything on this zone. You shouldn't close the hearing. You shouldn't send it to town meeting. You should seek the advice of experts. You should seek, seek the advice of town council. Now that these discrepancies have been brought up on this article before you make any.
Mr. Chairman, is there a time limit, please?
I already addressed that. And I, I said one more minute and he has five more seconds. Thank you.
And finally, I'll, I'll say this, 48, section five is what your board is guided by. It says, no vote to adopt any such zoning bylaw amendment shall be taken until a recommendation by the planning board has been submitted to the town meeting. The state legislature says that for reason. You hold the cards, you determine when it's ready to go. And that's why it can't go forward without a recommendation, either negative or positive.
Understood, thank you.
You're the guardian of the bylaw. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Karen Faylor, you had your hand up. Brian, if you could stop.
I just.
Sure.
I want to, to.
Thank you.
To emphasize a little bit higher level here. This may not be a perfect zoning article. However, we are faced with what we are afraid will be a way oversized housing development. And we've been told it won't work unless it's this, this big, right? And we can change zoning. We cannot change 485 housing units that are built on the lake that we may regret. And in a way, I'm making the same, I am making this, the same point as was made by, you know, other people. But we are afraid that something is going to go forward before, you know, a long-term plan is worked out. And we feel like we've got to at least have a voice that the sense of the town is we do not want large dense housing close to the lake.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
And that entails going to town meeting. How else are we going to express that in the next few months?
Through, when the project does go through in the ZBA, I don't want to jump too far ahead. And I know I'm not speaking for the ZBA. But speaking as a resident of Wakefield, my concern would be brought up. I would attend the ZBA meetings and I would voice my opinion during those meetings because anything of this size, special permit, regardless of this bylaw passing or not, is still going to go through the ZBA. And, and that's, I have to believe in the process. I have to believe in the town, the citizens going to the ZBA meeting and the members of the ZBA listening and making their decisions based on what they hear from the people from the town.
Can I say one more thing too? In terms of that plan, I do remember this being discussed at town meeting and actually being in favor of the concept, I still am. But I don't think I ever understood that it could result in this size of housing on the lake. I know I never under, that wasn't discussed. I mean, it made clear to people voting on it, you could have 600 apartments. You know, where, where American Mutual is. So there's a sense that people, even if they supported the basic idea, did not understand that this could happen.
Right. Thank you. That people have spoke, Carl D., Chris Crone and Noah. I'd like to take you in that order. Carl?
Thank you, Carl Dunlap, 18 King Street again. Yeah, so I realized that we've had three attorneys speak who represent their clients. Mr. McGreal and Ms. Monahan represent owners. Mr. Tam said he represented our client's property, but then Mr. Dougherty said there was a purchase and sales agreement. So that means they are not the current owner. And he declined to talk about any conditions, but so that, I just wanted to point out that false statement, it's not our client's property in that particular instance. And then I just wanted to enforce the view that, yep, it's good that this is out there. Whether or not these A and Rs exist because the attorneys are protecting their clients is fine, but it does raise awareness, which means this same whole group really needs to go to the ZBA as you also stated and express our opinions there. So you know, sort of regardless of what happens here or what, regardless of what happens at town meeting, it's encouraging to see, you know, 80 plus citizens in addition to billable attorneys here representing Wakefield. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crone, Crune, how is it said?
Crone, thank you.
Crone, alright, thanks.
114 Main Street. And I, I just briefly wanted to address some comments by Mr. McGreal. You know, I, I disagree. This is not a fundamental problem in terms of the, the zoning regulations. This is a correctable error. And, and this is something that can be worked out quite readily, quite speedily at town meeting where the townspeople will have an opportunity to boast, voice their opinion on this. I also did want to address the document he put up on the screen, which unfortunately I don't know exactly the name of the document, but the, the sentence, the paragraph that he read from, I think is kind of interesting because the last sentence, which Mr. McGreal did not read, stated that, that much of this district, talking about the lakeside district is, is for, could accommodate mid-rise or high-rise. I'm sorry, much of the district that is removed from the lakeside could accommodate mid-rise or high-rise apartments. And of course, the impetus of that sentence is to suggest that such mid-rise or high-rise apartments would not occur on the lakeside properties, which is of course what the project entails. So I just wanted to just point those two issues out. Thank you.
You're welcome. And this is, if you go to the town website, it's, it's named the housing production plan. If you do want to see the full version of it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Noah?
Noah Thompson, 670 Main Street. So, Mr. Chairperson, overall, I am in favor of development here, whether it be commercial or residential. I don't really care. What I care about is if any development here is beneficial to the town. So I haven't, through my research, I haven't been able to find an answer or a straight answer about this, that. So we are not as a town, we do not meet our chapter 40B requirements. Is that, is that correct?
Can you rephrase the question? We do not meet or?
Or so we are under the 10% affordable housing in the town.
We are.
So combined with that and the existing zoning, which again, no matter what happens with these two articles tonight or Saturday for the parcel, what can the proponent build as of right? Because I do want this to go through the zoning board of appeal. So you know, we, we can improve our lake, but improve, you know, I mean, because though that vast expanse of parking, just dumping, you know, unmitigated runoff into the lake. You know, so that we can improve that situation. So, so I do want to go through his own, but what can they, if we just flat out say, no, we're not going to even like entertain you. What can they do as a right? Can, can anyone answer that in this meeting?
Well, I could tell you that it's a 25 acre site. And if you took the 25 acres under our current zoning, it could hold more than 850 units, but not more than 900 by my calculations. So they could be a little bit off, but I would say about 850 units you could build on that 25 acre site. There are some issues with some easements that run through the site. There are also some issues with possible some conservation or some other areas near the lake that have to be set back further than what's there. I am not that familiar with it and I don't really want to get into that side of the discussion tonight and the development of it. But if anybody, anyone at the meeting has different numbers than the 25 acre site and about 850 units, please speak up to correct me. Okay. Just Noah, on page 62 of the Wakefield Housing Production Plan, it does go through from 2015, the projected years looking forward to 2019, which I know have already passed. But we, we don't have a current number, but I believe we're around 8% with our affordable units in the town with some of the newer developments in town. What we're looking at for a total number of units, I'm looking at the page now from year one, meaning 2015 to year five, 2019, we're looking at affordable units at 80% AMI. And this is in, in the chart, the, explain the area meeting, area median income, which has changed as well since then. It looks like 201 with 165 actual. So to get our numbers to where they need to be, it, I don't think a 40B housing unit, and I'm not as familiar with Tarrant Lane and the ZBA. I haven't caught up on all of what's going on up there, but that was part of a possible 40B. I don't want to get sidetracked too far, but I hope I answered the two questions that you had.
So I, I should probably rephrase that. My concern was that the, the proponent could use that. So I, I should probably rephrase that. My concern was that the, the proponent could use that, use Section 40B to bypass our zoning board of approvals.
Right. I can't say that they can or can't. I believe that is a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. M. Nelting? If you can unmute. Sorry, M. Nelting? I see your hand is up, but can't hear you speaking. Okay, they're no longer there.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
I was unmuting in the wrong place. I apologize.
No problem.
Waring Nelting, 100 Nahan Street. I'm new to towns. I have always lived in cities. So one question I have, someone mentioned that the town has accepted the preliminary subdivision plans. And there was a little bit of discussion after that. I'm a bit confused in that does that mean that CC and F have, I'm not sure if that's correct. The zoning at that site, do they have permission, permission isn't the correct word, but can, can they build based on the fact, I mean, they're not going to build tomorrow, clearly, but do do they have permission, quote unquote, based on the town accepting preliminary subdivision plans? I'm just a little confused about that.
Well, the preliminary subdivision plans will just really, it doesn't do anything, there's no presentation of where the buildings would go, there's nothing on there about buildings. It's just really the lots, and what would break up these lots with different lot lines? I'm, I'm really trying to simplify it.
That's fine. That's fine.
As far as what they can do, nothing, no multifamily housing can be built in limited business until it's in front of the zoning board of appeals for a special permit.
Okay, okay.
So there's the power that the zoning board of appeals has to help control the density of that area. It's up to a certain amount of units or square footage that could go there, and this floor area ratio, ratios and height limitations and everything that are set in the zoning bylaws. Regardless of anything that happens at town meeting on Saturday, or anything that happens tonight, a project would still have to go in front of the ZBA for multifamily housing for a special permit to be built. And I, I would like to just hear from Attorney McGrath quickly, how long do you think that process would take from your experience?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear.
For, to go through the ZBA for special permit for multifamily housing in a limited business zoned area, about how long in months do you think that would take for approval? Just.
First of all, you don't know if it would be approved, and.
Right, sorry.
And, you know, usually, I, my estimate would probably be probably minimum of six months.
Okay.
I mean, the ZBA is, is very thorough when they review projects, so that's my experience.
Thank you, Attorney McGrath, and I know there's some ZBA board members here tonight, but I do not want to put you on the spot for anything like this. I just want to make sure that if there's, if there is a place in our town for this to work and for public participation, besides town meeting, besides public hearings at the planning board, it would be when this project, if it moves forward for approval, would have to go to the ZBA, just to repeat again, for a special permit for multifamily housing in this zoning district.
Okay, I have one, just one more question. How many? Let me rephrase it. Does Wakefield have a, is there something in the Wakefield rules, regulations, bylaws, whatever you want to call them, that only allows two-bedroom units to be built?
No.
Multi-family complexes?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I don't think there's any thing in there saying it can only be two bedrooms, or that's the maximum.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't read anything in there. I mean, I, it's possible it's in there. I haven't read anything about it. Okay, thank you. We'll take Bill Conley as our last participant this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a comment, and I'm confused, and Mr. McGrath brought it up, and there apparently has been an update, apparently has been an update to the zoning bylaw language. When we started investigating our actions, we asked for certification that we were looking, and this might be of everybody's interest, the public interest, that we were looking at the latest zoning article language online, and we went with that, and that was from a town office. So unfortunately, if Mr. McGrath is right, we may not have the presight language, but Mr., Mr. Croon, I believe it is, I agree with him, that it still merits getting to town meeting, and it could be worked out at town meeting. And it should be worked out at town meeting, because it's the citizens' voice. And again, we were under the impression that we were looking at the zoning language and wrote accordingly. Just interesting to note. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conley, and I know at the beginning that, that was why I asked specifically, and I know we can't change the wording, but I was asking specifically about the 14 units, and if it was a square footage that you were looking at as well for the area.
Yeah, I think I was confused then, because you were, you were at, looking at something and approaching something from a different angle that we were not aware of.
Thank you. Joanne?
Yes. Okay, so in terms of the current zoning, which would allow for, is it, is it true that it would allow for up to like 870 units, close to 900 units with the current zoning, the way it is today?
For a 25-acre site in limited business under special permit, from what I calculated earlier this week, that's about where I came up with.
Okay.
About 860.
Okay, and has that been locked in? You talked about locking in the zoning? That it was already locked in?
Well, that's what the zoning bylaws currently are, so with us accepting, endorsing the A and R and accepting the preliminary subdivision plan, it holds or locks in the zoning bylaws when we, that date we accepted. Under the current meaning, it needs to go through a special permit to the ZBA.
So yes, it needs the ZBA approval for a special permit, but you're saying it's locked in. But then you said with this new article, which proposes reducing the density of the multifamily housing units. So we do.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so and, and also, when I asked originally, you also said it takes out the option for mid-rise apartments?
I don't believe so.
Somebody said that, I believe it was Mr. Conley?
I'm not sure.
Okay. So I guess my question is, if this were to go to town meeting, Article 11, and there was discussion about it, how does that affect what was previously locked in and approved?
It doesn't. It will only affect projects moving forward in the limited business zoning district. That would be for multifamily housing applying for a special permit. It wouldn't.
It doesn't affect the CCF project at all, is what you're saying?
Nope.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
That's not true.
Yes.
That is not.
The only, the only effect this zoning amendment is going to do is, is for the few parcels that did not file in our plans. So basically.
That's not true.
The unintended consequences is that, that people that have parcels that did not file a zoning freeze mechanism, an A and R or a preliminary subdivision, are going to be subject to this.
Excuse me, Matt, whoever is unmuted saying that's not true, do you want to share your opinion about this, or mute one or the other?
Sure. My name is John Gregorio, 88 Main Street.
Okay, speak, please.
It's not exactly true, it's a time, a time limit on it, and Brian can attest to that. It's a three-year time limit on an A and R. Get through the process, you're protected. Not get through the process, you have no protection. So a little disingenuous when you say it's unlimited, or they are protected.
Who said?
By right. What's that again?
Who said it was unlimited?
Well, everybody's saying that they have a right to do.
But nobody did say it was unlimited at all.
There's no timeframe on it, then?
There is, but nobody said it was unlimited.
Didn't there is a timeframe? That's my point. There is a timeframe, three years. Let's make that clear.
Is that three years with the preliminary subdivision also?
It's not, and if one of the, Attorney McGrath, if you could speak to that, that would be.
Well, excuse me, Bill, that's why.
Sorry, Matt.
I wanted, I'm sorry, you know, I, I was letting John answer the question, because he seems to have, you know, he seems to know, so I, I just wanted to pose the question to him, does that, you know, if you do a preliminary subdivision, is it also three years? Mr. Gregorio?
Yes. The question is, is a protection of three years on a preliminary subdivision plan in a commercial zone? Good question. The answer is no. The answer is that the definitive plan would dictate when the protection begins. That's my opinion. Others can disagree. You don't have to take any action on definitive plan.
Understood.
You can let that sit on your desk forever.
Thank you, Mr. Gregorio.
You're welcome.
I just, I just do want to make sure that we do hear from Attorney McGrath or Attorney Tam or another represent, representative of one of the pieces of land that went for the A and R. Brian, if you could please speak to the three-year time on the A and R and preliminary subdivision plan?
I first want to say hi to John. How you doing, John? I haven't seen John for a while. We go pretty far back. And John has a lot of knowledge in this area. I think he's a form of building commissioner, so. But the A and R plan is a three-year freeze from the date of, from the date that it is filed. And the preliminary subdivision plan that leads to a definitive plan is an eight-year freeze from the date that it's filed, and it is not true that you can let a definitive plan sit on your desk. You, you know that as a planning board, you have, I think after a preliminary plan, once that definitive plan is filed, you have, I believe it's 90 days to make a decision on that, otherwise it will be constructively approved automatically. And if it's no preliminary plan, definitive plan, you have 135 days to make a decision on that. And, and that locks in the zoning on the property for eight years. And it's important to note that when the zoning is locked in by those plans, nothing has to be built according to those plans. It just freezes the zoning on the, on the land, the subject parcel for any use that was allowed at the time that the plan was filed.
Thank you, Attorney McGrath. So in front of us as a board, we have a couple, we have some decisions to make this evening. Probably the biggest decision we have is whether to close public hearing or not close public hearing, meaning if we do not close public hearing, our next schedule, scheduled public planning board meeting, we can continue, well, not our next schedule, that would be on the 10th, and this is not on the agenda, it would be the next one. But we would be able to continue this and to work out the correct wording, move forward, and then possibly have a special town meeting to then vote. That's one option that we have. Another option that we have is to close the public hearing, and our planning board can vote whether to report, create a report for town meeting, so these articles can be heard on the floor of town meeting. If we do choose to continue and report, the board will have an option to recommend favorable action or not recommend favorable action for each of these articles, Article One and Article Two, or Town Meeting 10 and Town Meeting warrant 11. But I'd like to hear from the planning board members, not to vote, but just to have a discussion onto where you feel we are, and if there are any questions or clarifications that we can discuss. And I just want to see if, Joanne, you were speaking last, I want to see if you have any preference or opinions or comments or need clarification on the options that we have in front of us.
Listening to the people that have showed up here, you know, I really appreciate hearing from the public, and I appreciate hearing from the public at town meeting as well. It sounds like people that are directly impacted by the project would like to have this discussion at town meeting, and I don't see any harm in doing that. That's my initial thought from this.
Okay, thank you. So you would be in favor of closing the public hearing and reporting to town meeting, whether we recommend favorable action or not on these two?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to keep track. My little scorecard here. Megan?
I had a question in regards to the, in Section 190-6, in the general descriptions of the different zoning sections, the 14 units per acre and the 36 units per acre are described in the multiple residence, this general description, and are omitted from the limited business description. So I just want to be correct in the statement that when we showed the revised, well, online wording, that it's specific to those three items that were revised in 2015, and this 14 units per acre and 36 units per acre is only specific to multiple residence zones.
Yes. I agree, and it is confusing. I'm not saying that you're confused, but it is confusing when you do look at 190-6, which has the general descriptions, and then bring that to the section that we've been discussing, where it does have units and square footage, depending on the version that you look at. Okay, I'm sorry, was there a question?
No, I just wanted to make sure that I was, I was reading that right.
Yes, you are.
I understood it correctly.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you, do you, well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm, I'm very conflicted in my decisions, and because of the fact that making, making changes to the zoning bylaw would happen on the floor of town meeting and could potentially be voted forward. And the fact that I want to word this right, that it's more of a recommendation as to how to proceed with that area. I feel that because the wording is unclear, that I would be not in favor of closing the public hearing and would like to keep the public hearing open.
Thank you. Bill, Yamori?
Yes, I feel the same way that Megan does, because I, I think we just need to discuss this a little bit more. Really do.
Matt?
Yeah, I, I've heard the term thrown around a lot of long-term planning here. And doing long-term planning does not mean rushing a flawed article, at least flawed, in my opinion, to town meeting in order to try to work out the details. There's a process for that. This is the. This is the process. I think more than ever, we should be following processes and no matter what we do, because we see the, the unintended problems with rushing processes and, and trying to change things to meet people's needs. I did hear for the, you know, the one parcel that is not by the lake, that perhaps there'd be a, a zoning map amendment. To do that on the floor is, is really difficult to present a zoning map change without actually having a zoning map drafted up to distribute to everyone. Actually, I don't know how that can be possible. So one of the problems, if we go to town meeting and this does pass and it is flawed, is that at some point, someone's going to have to fix this. So someone's going to have to go through the zoning when, when we do find there are flaws, because no doubt, something this rushed, there will be flaws in it, need to be fixed. And we're going to find, have to find out who's going to sponsor that to, to get these corrected. What most likely going to happen is it's going to be the, the property owners are going to have to then propose zoning changes and bring them back to correct issues. So for, for me, I'm on the planning board to plan things properly. And I cannot see moving forward with closing public hearing at this point. I, I think we need to work these details out. Whether it comes down to a special planning board meeting at some point, I, I mean, town meeting, or it goes to a spring town meeting, you know, that's, I think that's the, the proper course to take at this point. Practically speaking, with these parcels and these developments, because of the A and Rs that have been filed and, and accepted and endorsed by the board and the preliminary plans that have been filed, for these parcels here, it, it basically freezes zonings for the foreseeable future. I'm not saying forever, it's for a few years, depending on how we act on the preliminary subdivision plans. So, so for me, I would not want to close out public hearing.
Thank you, Matt. Before we continue, I do want to say thank you for all the participation. I, I've said this at other meetings where we do have more than six people attending. It's really wonderful to hear comments and the passion that we have for our town. And I know, and I appreciate your patience at the beginning of the meeting where I couldn't find the host key and get it going. That was, that was a little tough to, to, to manage through, but I, I feel this meeting is exactly what we needed it to be. I feel this meeting helped me as a board member and as a resident of Wakefield, understand more of what this could be. And I know this sounds a little tacky or corny, but I've sat at the top of the lake and sketched out what I think that should look like. I've drawn some views. I've completely blocked out Jordan's furniture at night. I've really tried to figure out what trees could really grow at what angle to help with light pollution. And if anybody attended the conservation commission and the light pollution, that was wonderful. And it's recorded. And our board will be following up with that at some point. But we, I just think of the, the lower height lights, benches, little places to workout, maybe a brewery or distillery and some other things going on in that area that also incorporates the mixed use. A former town planner, Paul Reviss, fought hard to get that mixed use going and really put some time into this. And you know, I learned so much from working with him, and he really has inspired me to continue a lot of his efforts to move forward with making sure that things are really well thought out and planned. What I don't have is his years of experience as an architect and a lawyer to, to really know what to look for where. So where, so we're depending on a lot of the people in the town to help us with this, whether they're attorneys and residents or people that love our lake. So I have to say, I want to make more time to understand this. I think everybody understands it's clear that no matter what we decide this evening, no matter what happens at town meeting, for the next three years, as pointed out, this land is locked in where it is. It isn't forever, but that's enough time. And I believe in the process that it would have to go to the ZBA. I, I really, really have to believe in that because that's how it needs to work. It's somewhat checks and balances. It, it, it's going to be the way it needs to work for special permit. I would like to keep this public meeting open. We do not have it on our agenda, the public hearing open. The agenda for November 10th, which is Tuesday, we have been meeting a lot in the last couple of weeks, is already set. But November 17th and December and January, we really need to take some time, whether it's grabbing pieces of our housing plan, our open space plan, and really understanding it, inviting the developers, and really taking into consideration the people that live along Main Street, the new homeowners and apartment owners and dwellers that live along North Ave. What can we do? So that would be wonderful if we could really come up with a plan for this, for if, if the zoning bylaws need to change. So from calculating this, I see that four of our members would like to keep the public hearing open. We don't have to vote on this. We don't have to do anything tonight. We just have to keep the public hearing open and schedule it on our next agenda. I know this might be a little dissatisfying for all the efforts some people have put in for this. But you have to trust the process. You have to really believe that we can be out there. We can be out there as residents and go to the ZBA meeting to work on this, to really, really give our advice on what this could be. And I've been to enough ZBA meetings to understand and watched enough to really feel that they do listen. They do understand. They do believe like we do that it's, it's so important to make this work. So tonight, we really don't have to act on anything else. We don't really have to discuss anything else. We just have to keep this public hearing open and set it in our agenda for November 17th. Anybody on the board have any comments? Again, I'd like to thank everybody's time and effort on this. I know it's not easy, but.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, Attorney McGrath?
With a point of order, you do need to vote to continue the public hearing to a certain date. That's a point of.
Do we actually have to vote on it to continue it?
Need to continue the public hearing so the public knows when that's going to be a, a date and time.
Okay. We don't have to advertise for that if we vote on.
Correct.
Want to make sure that's clear. It's a little bit new to me that we would have to vote to keep the public hearing open.
Well, no, you're not voting to keep it open, you're voting to continue it to a certain date.
Okay, all right. Sorry for my misunderstanding. So I'd like to entertain a motion to keep public hearing, to place, well, to word this correctly, sorry, I'm getting tired, for our November 17th meeting.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, let me, for our November 17th planning board meeting, to continue this public hearing, to review Article 1 and Article 2 as presented by the Friends of Lake Quanapawet.
So I, I don't know if we need to take a, you know, I don't, I don't think we've taken a vote on this before, but.
I don't think so either, but.
I think we placed this on our, our November 17th agenda for discussion. I think that'd be appropriate.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Megan. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, that looks, okay, I see. So that's five in favor. It's the first time we've had five planning board members vote on something in a long time. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes, Susan. I'm sorry, Susan Aldis, our clerk, by the way.
Will this be a special meeting on the 17th? Because we usually meet the second and fourth Tuesday.
Oh, sorry.
Third.
Thank you for pointing that out. Let me pull up the calendar. Sorry, it is the 24th. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I think we just said our next hearing date for the 17th, so. So, yes, well, you know, instead of having a, a meeting just before Thanksgiving, we have one a week before that.
Okay, and you know what's nice about this is we don't have to find a room at town hall for it, which has been a big problem in the past. We couldn't have a special meeting because there wasn't a room for it. Thank you, Susan. So we will have a, a meeting on the 17th. That would be four or five weeks in a row. There we go. All right, thanks for pointing that out. Okay. Like to entertain a motion to adjourn?
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll sit here all night. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second, Bill, that you?
A second now.
All in favor? Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Megan. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.